...has been provided by filing a copy with the municipal clerk on December 10, 2007, faxing a copy to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Chronicle, and the Bulletin on December 10, 2007 at 10:51 a.m., and posting a copy on the bulletin board of the main floor of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, on December 10, 2007 at 11 a.m. Patrick, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call. Mayor Frank?
Here.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman Minkoff?
Yeah, I'm down here.
Do you need a telephone book?
Do you need a law book?
Councilman Morris?
Here.
Councilman Watson?
Here.
Board Administrator?
Here.
Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda items?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Public discussion?
What?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a resolution to approve a raffle license for Congregation Ohav Emmett?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Minkoff?
Recuse.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay, and do I have a resolution to authorize a settlement with Placid Brook Associates? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
One second.
Councilwoman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Public discussion? Seeing as there is none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Are we adjourning and then? To adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
That's that one.
Okay.
Okay, so now we move back in.
Different agenda.
All right. Now, clerk, could you please report on the certi--?
No, no.
Okay, I'm waiting.
Different agenda.
Not this agenda?
Mm-mm. The big one.
Okay. Can you please report on the certification of election and qualifications of Mayor-Elect Frank, that's me, and council persons Erickson and Goodheart?
It's my pleasure to report that the Middlesex County Board of Election has certified the election of Merrill Frank as mayor and the elections of John Erickson and Frank Goodheart as members of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park. Once they have subscribed to the oath of office and allegiance, they will be qualified to assume their duly elected positions on the governing body.
Okay. Should we take the motion now or prefer?
Prefer. Sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the unfortunate resignation of Councilwoman Goodheart? She's left to go to Washington for an internship for a year, and hopefully she'll be back real soon. Is there a motion?
Point of information, I think that's a fellowship, not an internship, isn't it?
There you go, Gar. Excuse me.
Just because I was downgraded doesn't mean she can't be upgraded.
Amend that motion.
Amend that motion.
Do I have a motion on amending the motion to accept Fern's resignation?
A motion on the amended motion.
Say yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Otherwise, clerk?
Yes. The mayor administers to herself?
Nope. That sounds strange, Elsie.
No.
We have a stand-in for my son Isaac from away at college, and that's his cousin. This is so cool, the mayor comes with her own props now. I affirm.
Aye. Say your name.
Aye, Merrill Frank.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully, that I will faithfully, impartially, impartially, and justly perform, and justly perform, all the duties, all the duties, of the office of mayor, of the office of mayor, according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further affirm, I do further affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will further support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith, and that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Do you mind if I just say one? I have a speech later, but I just wanted to say a few words. This is now a third term, which in Highland Park is historic, it's never happened before. And there are some melancholy feelings about it, since it's been eight years, and we've done a tremendous amount of this in this community. I think that we can't should take the pace of Highland Park forever. And there's, it's been an amazing experience for our family, but there's also been costs, and there's been costs to being the mayor and to the amount of time that it puts in to really make changes in a community. When I first came here and was sworn in, my daughter Belle was five. He was, how did he do that? Help me, he were eight, seven. Eli, who is now six-three, was shorter than me. And he was like, "How old are you?" You were nine. And Jeremy, you were nine too. And my son Isaac, who's at college, was fifty-four as well. And I think that we didn't know when I started how much time this would take. And I was really scared, Patrick. We didn't know how much time it would take, and we didn't know that during those first two years, when it was a real struggle and very difficult, where there were political fights going on, that it would mean that I would be here every day, every night, that I would be working sixteen hours a day, seventy a week. But that's not the case anymore. But during that period, I think that with small children and working with a community that wanted to change and was looking for real movement and changing direction, that there was a tremendous sacrifice that my family makes, and I know that the families that the council people make. I know that our volunteers and our police officers understand that that's about. And we do this, and we hope that when our children grow up, they're going to appreciate it and that they'll understand the value of serving for your community. But I also hope they understand that we love our communities and we do this to work for our communities, but we love them first and that they are the most important parts of our lives. And so to them, I say thank you. My husband, who has been remarkable through Spalding State, who took on the role of being mom and dad during those first few years, I say thank you and I love you. And to the people that we work with who is borough, who are the most remarkable people that you can possibly imagine, who go older and above all of its time. And to this council, I am so proud of them. They are amazing people who put the kind of time I'm talking about into this. I say thank you to all of you for making this a great ride for an eight years that is not only personally an important eight years, but to this community has changed the face of Highland Park forever. I say thank you to all of you for this incredible, incredible home. I know I'm back with an extraordinary council who also understands what I'm talking about and for, and that is John Erickson. Highland Park is a community where we affirm. I, John Erickson.
I, John Erickson.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially. Impartially. And justly perform. And justly perform. All the duties.
All the duties.
Of office of councilman.
Of office of councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly affirm.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Congratulations. I know, I know.
Say goodbye, Jane.
Come aboard, take your seat.
Okay. I now call this meeting to order. Do I have to read the open public meetings thing again? Okay, we don't need to do the pledge of allegiance, roll call. Okay. Now, I'd like to introduce, I'm very happy to introduce, our new councilman, Patrick Malley, and our re-elected councilman, John Erickson. All right. Do I have a resolution to adopt the rules of order for 2008?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Ooh, see if it's in order. Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a resolution to adopt the mission statement for the Borough of Highland Park? The mission statement is on the top of your agendas, and I'll read it. Mission statement of Highland Park: The desire to retain basic, safe, comfortable, and accessible environment and character in the community, to preserve the housing stock, to provide reasonable tax base to support the purposes that historically have defined Highland Park's strong community, to plan and identify opportunities for orderly economic growth, and to create an environment which will continue a high degree of citizen involvement. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a nomination for council president for 2008?
I'd like to nominate Elsie Foster-Dublin for that role. She's done it in the past and does an incredibly effective and fun job. We look forward to working with her again in '08.
And she's tough.
She's tough, too.
Do I have a motion on the nomination?
Motion.
Do I have a motion that is closed?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other nominations?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Standing committees.
Excuse me?
The next one.
All right. The 2008 council president is elected by a claim? That was easy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do we actually have to say aye?
Yes, say aye.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Aye.
Aye, affirm.
Everybody say, "Yes, Elsie." How about that? Okay, good. Do I have a resolution to establish 2008 standing committees?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Does he affirm or he swears?
Just so that you know how this procedure works, I think it's dictated by statute. The party chairs ask to, within a certain number of days, send over three candidates to the council to interview. The council is very lucky to have three fabulous candidates, and so it's with Patrick Malley to fill Fern's unexperienced. You, how do we do this, Joan? Left hand?
Reach right hand, left hand on the left.
Reach right hand on the left. I, Patrick Malley.
I, Patrick Malley.
Do solemnly, I'm gonna swear.
Swear, I swear.
Okay. You're feeling your caliber. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of office of councilman.
Of office of councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of office of councilman.
Of office of councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Congratulations. Do I have a motion that we, as I said, appoint?
A point.
Replacement.
A replacement for Fern Goodheart's position on council with Patrick Malley.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Do I need a roll call?
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Ooh, see if it's in order. Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a resolution to adopt the mission statement for the Borough of Highland Park? The mission statement is on the top of your agendas, and I'll read it. Mission statement of Highland Park: The desire to retain basic, safe, comfortable, and accessible environment and character in the community, to preserve the housing stock, to provide reasonable tax base to support the purposes that historically have defined Highland Park's strong community, to plan and identify opportunities for orderly economic growth, and to create an environment which will continue a high degree of citizen involvement. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a resolution to adopt the mission statement for the Borough of Highland Park? The mission statement is on the top of your agendas, and I'll read it. Mission statement of Highland Park: The desire to retain basic, safe, comfortable, and accessible environment and character in the community, to preserve the housing stock, to provide reasonable tax base to support the purposes that historically have defined Highland Park's strong community, to plan and identify opportunities for orderly economic growth, and to create an environment which will continue a high degree of citizen involvement. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a nomination for council president for 2008?
I'd like to nominate Elsie Foster-Dublin for that role. She's done it in the past and does an incredibly effective and fun job. We look forward to working with her again in '08.
And she's tough.
She's tough, too.
Do I have a motion on the nomination?
Motion.
Do I have a motion that is closed?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other nominations?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Standing committees.
Excuse me?
The next one.
All right. The 2008 council president is elected by a claim? That was easy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do we actually have to say aye?
Yes, say aye. Do I have a motion to accept?
Aye.
Aye, affirm.
A claim. Everybody say, "Yes, Elsie." How about that? Okay, good. Do I have a resolution to establish 2008 standing committees?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that I might go--
You're going first.
No, I'm gonna go. Oh, wasted. Is that okay?
You know, there are some things that we're doing that are not on the agenda tonight.
No.
Is that going on the agenda tonight, Karen?
What?
Excuse me.
Chief, would you mind coming up?
And Jeff?
We have an announcement to make tonight, which is not on the agenda, and that is that after a long, exhausted search, we have decided on a candidate for our district. Would you like to talk a little bit about the process?
While the police committee met with Karen Wald and myself, there were, over the last year and a half, there have been a lot of work done by eighty people in the department, a couple of different projects that were given out by mayor and council, and then an interview process was held. There were six people who had put their hat in, the hat, I should say, for a position of chief of police and or captain, and after completion of the process a couple of weeks ago, people were selected.
The chief, our present chief, who has been an extraordinary chief and a wonderful addition to the department, agreed to stay with us in Highland Park. He was ready to retire, but I think it was the third time I talked about it before, third or fourth time, or third time that I talked about it before. We were going through the process over a year ago. It became clear to us that we had a lot of talent in our police department, but we needed to have more time to go through the process and to see who would be the right person to lead our department, and we were very lucky, we were in fact less, had Frank Atherton, who had been with the department thirty-five years, thirty-seven and a half years, agreed to stay with us and to help usher us through this process. He had been an extraordinary police officer, a fantastic chief. We are so lucky to have had him here to help us through this process, which is a fair process, and honestly, we do have an extraordinarily talented department, so it was difficult coming up with the final conclusion. And I'd like to know if you would like to--
All right. The person, do you want me to--
I would be happy to do that.
Okay. The person that will replace me upon my retirement, January 31st, will be Stephen Rysko. Steve has been with the department for a lot to help me out as a twenty--
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years. And Steve has been working primarily patrol through his career, worked his way up to the position of lieutenant. While he's been on the department, he's gone through law school, practicing attorney, and he will be a tremendous chief in the department. And I'll have to stop back to see how things are going, but I know they'll be going well under his regime. Chris, congratulations. Also, part of this process was to identify a second command for the department, and that person will be filling the position of captain of police, and that officer will be Lieutenant Scott Gold. Scott has also been with the department for twenty-two years. They actually started on the same day. They came in together, and now they'll be working side by side. Through my time as a lieutenant, as a captain, and then the chief, I can tell you that they're both excellent workers, they're fit for the jobs that they'll be taking, and they will work very, very well together, and I think we have a lot of very positive and great things coming ahead in the department. Scott, congratulations.
Thanks, too. Actually, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor, the council, particularly members of the Public Safety Committee, Jeff Morris and Elsie Foster-Dublin. I'd also like to thank our Borough Administrator, Karen Wald, and last but not least, Chief Adams. I agree, we are very lucky that the chief decided to delay his retirement. He, I learned a lot from him, he's truly a consummate professional, and he's going to be missed. Those are predictions they have to try to fill, fill up to the task thanks to working on the chief. So thank you for the opportunity, I'm thrilled and honored to select him. Thank you.
And we'll do an appointment later on in the month, and of course, a farewell to our chief.
Okay. Is it council reports?
Council reports.
Okay. And now our council reports. Who are we going to start with?
John.
How about John?
Okay.
Do you want to come up to the podium?
Yeah. For the last year I've chaired, I'm John Erickson, by the way, for the last year I've chaired the council's Health and Welfare Standing Committee and served as liaison to the school board, the library, the Board of Health, Commission for Universal Access, the Housing Authority, the Food Pantry, and the Municipal Alliance. This upcoming year, I'll chair the Public Works and Public Utilities Standing Committee and will serve as liaison to the Environmental Commission, the Shade Tree Committee, the Green Community and Green Challenge Group, the Environmental Center Task Force, the Meadows Task Force, and serve as the Clean Communities Liaison. Let me give a report on the things that I've worked on this last year. As liaison to the school board this year, I've been working on increasing the number and quality of shared services. We again offered an after-school program that merged the, previously merged the boroughs and the school districts' after-school programs. This last year, we had nearly three hundred students participating at Irving School and Bartle School, and it also opened an after-school homework session at the middle school. And as another shared service, the school district and the recreation department jointly operated two summer camps with approximately a hundred and fifty kids participating in the day camp, and various sports camps had over fifty percent through the fourth through the ninth grades. Lastly, the success of the summer camps and the after-school programs demonstrate our
Steve has been with the department for a lot to help me out as a 22 years. Twenty-two years and Steve has been working primarily through his career, worked his way up to the position of lieutenant while he's been on the department. He's gone through law school, practicing attorney, and he will be a tremendous chief in the department. And I'll have to stop back to see how things are going, but I know they'll be going well under his regime. Chris, congratulations. Also, part of this process was to identify a second command for the department and that person will be filling the position of captain of police and that officer will be Lieutenant Scott Gold. Scott has also been with the department for 22 years. They actually started on the same day. They came in together and now will be working side by side. Through my time as a lieutenant, as a captain, and then the chief, I can tell you that they're both excellent workers, they're fit for the jobs that they'll be taking, and they will work very, very well together. And I think we have a lot of very positive and great things coming ahead in the department. Scott, congratulations.
Thanks too. Actually, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor, the council, particularly members of the Public Safety Committee, Jeff Morris and Matt Kelsey-Foster-Dublin. I'd also like to thank our administrator, Karen Waldron, and last but not least, Chief Abbott. I agree, we're very lucky that the chief decided to delay his retirement. He, I learned a lot from him, he's truly a consummate professional and he's going to be missed. Those are predictions they have to try to fill, fill up to the task thanks to working as a chief. So, thank you for the opportunity, I'm thrilled and honored to select you.
And we'll do an appointment later on in the month and, of course, a farewell to our chief.
Okay, is it council reports?
Council reports.
Okay. And now our council reports. Who are we going to start with? How about John? Do you want to come up to the podium?
For the last year I've chaired, I'm John Erickson by the way, for the last year I've chaired the council's Health and Welfare Standing Committee and served as liaison to the school board, the library, the Board of Health, Commission for Universal Access, the Housing Authority, the Food Pantry, and the Municipal Alliance. This upcoming year, I'll chair the Public Works and Public Utilities Standing Committee and will serve as liaison to the Environmental Commission, the Shade Tree Committee, the Green Community and Green Challenge Group, the Environmental Center Task Force, the Meadows Task Force, and serve as the Clean Communities Liaison. Let me give a report on the things that I've worked on this last year. As liaison to the school board this year, I've been working on increasing the number and quality of shared services. We again offered an after-school program that merged the, previously merged the boroughs and the school districts' after-school programs. This last year, we had nearly 300 students participating at Irving School and Bartle School, and it also opened an after-school homework session at the middle school. And as another shared service, the school district and the recreation department jointly operated two summer camps with approximately 150 kids participating in the day camp and various sports camps had over 50 percent through the fourth through ninth grades. Lastly, the success of the summer camps and the after-school programs demonstrate our and the school board's commitment to lowering costs and improving quality through the provision of shared services. This year, the camp will be completely administered by the school district. In addition, this activity will be transferred to the Finance Standing Committee this next year. The library. I also served as liaison to the library board and worked with library director Jane Stanley and board chair Julie Green. The library has been offering a full range of programs for children and adults, including film series, poetry nights, and ongoing art displays. The library's circulation has increased again this year. Lastly, due to a drop in municipal funding, the library was forced to cut back on hours of operation on weekends in the fall, but to make up for the cut, the library has conducted a fundraiser in December that thus far has raised over $6,500. This fundraiser will hopefully become an annual effort to supplement municipal funding in addition to funds already raised by the Friends of the Library for special programs. This activity will also be transferred to the Finance Standing Committee. The Board of Health has worked on a variety of issues over the year, but probably the most important going forward is its efforts to revise the noise ordinance. The new ordinance will reduce the hours that excessively noisy activities will be allowed. In addition, the Board of Health and the new council liaison will soon manage the mayor's wellness campaign. The Commission for Universal Access continues to make efforts to make Highland Park more accessible to residents with limited mobility. The commission carried on a number of discussions with various community leaders to determine what changes should be made to increase accessibility. At the commission's request, an inventory handicap parking spaces have been conducted and the spaces have been repaired or repainted to meet existing law, and the signs are now being updated to reflect current penalties. The Housing Authority. This was a transitional year for the Housing Authority. Last year, a new director was hired to be at the Housing Authority, however, the new director did not fit and left in the middle of the year. After a second search, a new director who is seeking state certification was hired. The Housing Authority operates both senior and family housing in Highland Park and has unfortunately a long waiting list for persons seeking subsidized housing. The Food Pantry. This was also a transitional year for the Food Pantry. After resignation of the previous directory, the Food Pantry under interim director Beth Leach has successfully stabilized the Food Pantry's operations. The supplies available for distribution have increased, the number of volunteers has also increased. This service will be transferred from the Health and Welfare Standing Committee to the Community Services Standing Committee. The Municipal Alliance. The Municipal Alliance, which primarily concentrates on small grant efforts to combat teen drug and alcohol abuse, continued its operation this year. The function of the alliance will be transferred today from the Health and Welfare Standing Committee to the Community Services Standing Committee. Code Enforcement. Over the last few months, Scott Luke and I have worked on developing a new fee schedule for the Department of Code Enforcement. The intent was to create a fee schedule that actually covers the cost of the department. Last month, the common council approved that fee schedule and hopefully the cost of the department will no longer exceed its revenues. Over the next month, I plan to meet with the Public Works and Public Utilities Standing Committee and meet individually with representatives of the Environmental Commission, the Shade Tree Committee, the Green Community and Green Challenge Group, the Environmental Center Task Force, and the Meadows Task Force. I look forward to having a productive year. Thank you.
Patrick?
Don't do it to him.
Just kidding. Jeff?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Jeff Morris. I'm the chair of the Public Safety Committee and this is my report for 2007. Once again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and very happy new year to all. This is my year-end report on behalf of the Public Safety Committee and it's been a pleasure to serve on this committee for another year alongside my fellow council persons, Councilwoman Foster Dublin and Councilwoman Goodheart. Before I discuss all the exciting initiatives our emergency service departments have taken in 2007, I would like to take the opportunity to thank personally Councilwoman Fern Goodheart for exceptional work as an elected official in the borough of Highland Park. I learned a lot from Councilwoman Goodheart throughout the past few years as she became such an intricate part of this local government. Her exceptional vision of bettering the borough in so many different capacities along with her impeccable taste in organizing kept most of us on track in one way or another, and it also reflects the fact that she will be sorely missed as she embarks on her new career in Washington. I wish her and her family the best on this new endeavor, excuse me, and know that she will continue to bring those same important qualities to her new job in the future. 2007 was a year of change for our emergency service departments in so many different ways. I use the word "change" with great applause to our police department, our fire department, and our first aid squad. The departments accomplished so many goals in a very tough fiscal year. Their willpower to overcome obstacles, successfully researching grants and fundraise for certain projects enabled them to move forward instead of becoming stagnant. The Highland Park Police Department had a large change as they promoted three officers to the rank of sergeant and three sergeants to the rank of lieutenant. The Public Safety Committee, along with Chief Frank Atherton, embarked on this journey in the beginning of 2007 in the quest to strengthen the department and its future. The process of reconstructing the police department was done to create a solid line of succession for the future, and as we move into 2008, our new lieutenants have received some of the most comprehensive training available in the state. As one attended the West Point Command and Leadership Program and two others attended the Ruckers Executive Leadership Program. The purpose of this was to provide our superior officers with the knowledge and how to lead into the future and continue to build on being a productive and community-oriented police department for the diverse residents of Highland Park. In addition, other accomplishments for the police department were the purchasing of new weapons and the upgrading of their in-house computer system for the new service. The police department also adopted a new school security plan and conducted needed training in the rapid deployment to our schools during the times of emergency. They received grants for aggressive driving and new driver education, which will enable the department to better enforce and teach in the future. As an added piece of information, the police department also responded to a total of 19,075 calls last year. An impressive amount of response from an department that totals 30 officers. I would like to personally thank Chief Frank Atherton for all his time and effort in 2007. He cares so greatly about Highland Park and its residents and has been a model chief for those to follow in the future towards his retirement. The Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department, under the direction of Chief Hector Malave, also had a productive year as they responded to 531 calls in 2007. There were 11 structure fires in Highland Park last year that our bravest fought along with 19 car fires, 12 hazmat calls, 52 carbon monoxide calls, five mutual aid calls in other towns. In addition, they responded to the storms that occurred last April and our volunteers responded to 65 calls in 25 hours, which was the most calls responded by the department in the history of it in a 24-hour period. And this is just to name a few of the incidents. The volunteers of the Highland Park Fire Department continue to serve with great pride and have worked tirelessly in 2007 to better the equipment through grants and donations. They received a Homeland Security Grant for over $64,000 for improvement to their communications. They also received a vehicle from the police department, a 1999 Ford Expedition, with monies from our fire prevention fines and penalties account. We're able to transform the vehicle into a command vehicle for the fire department. In fundraising efforts, the volunteers were also able to purchase a new extrication tool this past year and are waiting to place it into service after all of its membership become qualified in its use. The police, excuse me, the fire department also brought in six new volunteers to their ranks. This is a huge accomplishment for the fire department as the days of finding volunteers to serve has become more difficult. So, I would once again like to welcome them and thank them for being a part of a department that is so rich in history and tradition in our borough. Moving along, the Highland Park First Aid Squad responded to over 1,097 calls last year, equalling approximately 3,066-person hours. Under the command of Captain Becky Lauer, these volunteers are an exceptional group as they unselfishly respond to our residents and non-residents who are ill or hurt. They had an exceptional year as they purchased a new computer system that will forward incident reports to the state and the database for personnel and training needs. They also conducted a blood drive this past year, which brought positive media for the borough and their department. The First Aid Squad also continued to train throughout the state with their certified instructors in first aid and safety-related topics. I'm also pleased to report that the squad bought on four new members to their department and I appreciate each of their commitments to the safety of the borough and its residents. The First Aid Squad also came to the Public Safety Committee early in 2007 to discuss its future needs. It was a pleasure to work with Captain Lauer and her officers in recognizing their future projects and how they could be, how we could be of assistance to them. A major concern of the department was the condition of their squad building. After hearing those concerns and along with our police and fire departments, we agreed that a goal was needed to be set in revitalizing our emergency service buildings. Under the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee and Mayor Frank, a committee was formed, made up of our emergency service personnel and borough officials, and met with a number of architects to discuss the needs of all the departments. We were able to find a firm that will work closely with each department, and I look forward to moving ahead in 2008 with this project, especially with all the departments involved, as we will be able to recognize and assess future needs of these buildings that are all over 50 years old and have become antiquated in some of their uses. Though this is a long-term project for the borough, I would ask that our residents continue to support the endeavors of these departments in assisting our volunteers especially during the times of their fund drives, as they still rely upon you once a year, you can rely upon them all year round. I would also like to briefly comment on our pedestrian and bicycle safety task force. This group brought to the Borough Council an in-depth report on their findings on how to decrease pedestrian and bicycle safety accidents in the borough. The council was so moved and appreciated their important recommendations that they will be asking the task force to become a recognized standing committee within the borough at our next regular meeting. I want to thank all the members of the task force for a job well done. In closing, the Public Safety Committee will continue to assist each of the borough's emergency service departments' needs in 2008 and look forward to working even closer with each department this year in, excuse me, in increasing our services to the borough and its residents. Thank you very much.
First, I want to thank the mayor and say hello to fellow council members, board and commission members, Democratic committee members who I see in the audience, borough staff, fellow residents, friends, and I think I had a family, yeah, a couple of family members over there. I want to say welcome to 2008 and thank you for your attendance tonight and your past, present, and future efforts to make Highland Park a better place. In addition, I want to congratulate the mayor and John Erickson on starting their new terms. I look forward to continuing to work with you. And I also want to congratulate Pedrick Malay and Condolences on becoming part of our brother and sisterhood of the council members. 2007, this, my wife said, "Don't use this analogy," but this is all I had, so I'm going to use it anyway. I'm going to use the gardening analogy. 2007 for me was a year of tending a garden, and the garden was the Economic Development Committee. It was a busy year, it was exciting, it was the first year I did the Economic Development Committee before that I was on the Community Services. And I'll tell you, the rubber really hits the road in this committee. I also want to thank Gary Minkoff and John Erickson, who are my fellow committee members on that committee, for their guidance and help on many of the issues that we've been working on over the year. As chair of the committee, I've had the pleasure and privilege of working with dedicated volunteers and staff from the Planning Board, the Redevelopment Agency, the Board of Adjustment, I see some folks here from the Board of Adjustment, the Main Street Organization, and all the folks who work on improving the quality of life and economic sustainability of Highland Park. As I said, if I had to imagine the downtown business district as a garden, 2007 was primarily a year of tending to the maturing seedlings. The plan to grow the economic sustainability of our community is rooted in the vision found in the Highland Park 2020 Plan. A significant element in that plan calls for the revitalization of the borough's business district. The tools to make that happen include the Highland Park Main Street Organization, also adding new downtown retail and residential space through infill redevelopment, redesigning the Raritan Avenue streetscape, and creating new public and cultural spaces. So, how are we doing on these gardening duties? Well, the Redevelopment Agency spent much of the year working with the developer, Dornock, to bring to reality a central element of the borough's redevelopment plan. The downtown area that includes the vacant building we once used as our senior center is slated to become a vibrant new focal point for culture, commerce, and public space. As envisioned in the original development plan, the project includes a public plaza, a film and performance theater, and new ground-for-retail and residential units above. Much of this year was spent working with a developer to both purchase the properties in the area, needed to make the project viable, and to refine the project plan. As you know, we've been very sensitive in this community about the issues of working with current property owners in the redevelopment process, that it's mutually agreed to and that no one feels they're forced into doing anything. But that also created multiple negotiations with property owners that took significant parts of this year to come to agreement on. But the good news is, that was accomplished by the developer towards the end of this year and has allowed us to move forward with our plans. Since that time, the Redevelopment Agency has worked to add detail to the project, including the features of the new public plaza and the culture center, and finishing negotiations on the specific contract with the developer to make sure that this plan moves forward and is done properly. We hope to be finished with that within the month. So, that means in 2008, we will see the groundbreaking on this fantastic project. It's harvest time. I also want to thank Mickey Landis, who has been the leader of the Redevelopment Agency since I've been there. He recently has stepped down from that position, he's still on the Redevelopment Agency, but I just want to publicly thank him for all his hard work over the year that I've been there. He really knows his stuff and is an honest broker in these discussions. I also want to congratulate Steve Nolan, who is a former council person, really one of the fathers of the redevelopment plan. He has come back to the Redevelopment Agency and is now the new chair as of the last meeting. So, welcome back, Steve. Streetscape. Over the last year, again, tending the garden, the borough has put significant effort into working with the state agencies, our designers, PSENG, and the community members on finalizing our Raritan Avenue streetscape plans and gaining the needed approvals to begin construction. At times, this has been a difficult process, as you've probably heard from the mayor sitting up on that dais right there. We've had many frustrations with some of the state agencies, specifically DOT, to move that forward, but we have been diligent and with the help of Karen Waldron under Borough Administrator, we continue to push and push and push to make this plan a reality. And we're getting there. In the coming year, you will see a transformation of the downtown business district streetscape. The project will create a safer and more inviting streetscape, which will increase pedestrian safety, will include new landscaping, new signage, new lighting, and traffic calming and a traffic calming design. We're poised to deliver on what will be an historic improvement to this community. In addition, Councilwoman Foster Dublin is working, is continuing to work on her important plan to redo the Woodbridge Avenue streetscape, but I'll let Elsie talk about that and her plans, which is also very exciting. Main Street. Main Street, as you know, has been integral to the revitalization of downtown for years now, and they continue to have productive years and they continue to function at a very high level. The staff and volunteers of Main Street have spent the last year refining and improving the many downtown events that bring thousands of folks to our community and enliven our boroughs, such as the Arts in the Park and the Street Fair in the spring. They also work on facade improvement, business attraction, which we've seen some new businesses come into town, it's very exciting. I don't know if anybody's seen the 10,000 villages that recently moved into town, that's, we're all very excited about that. They've worked on downtown beautification, which includes some of the flower plants that you've seen in the community and maintaining that and working with local businesses to improve their window designs. And general business support. One of the many special projects Main Street worked on over the year and has just got up is a new interactive website that highlights Highland Park's businesses. The website gives specific information describing the business and its services in the downtown. You go onto the website, and I don't have the website address, hopefully, shophighlandpark.com. Thank you, Karen, for saving me. If you go onto that website, you'll see an interactive map that'll allow you to move around and click on the actual, the aerial view of the buildings, and it'll tell you what business is there, and then you click on it, it'll go to a webpage explaining what the business does and the services that it provides. It's a very neat little website, so I encourage people to check it out. They've also, over the last year, worked with local businesses to do more effective joint marketing and branding. The Planning Board. This past year, the Planning Board presided over a very difficult and emotional and I dare say controversial discussion on the future of the YMYWHA property. Over the months of public hearings, the board listened intently to the community and the professionals to inform their decisions on the recommendations for potential zoning changes. In the end, the Y decided to change their plans and rebuild in another location, but it's important that we recognize the way in which the members of the Planning Board conducted themselves and the high quality of their process. Sometimes we forget how difficult it can be to take on those kinds of responsibilities as a volunteer in this community, and I want to thank them for all the hard work they did during their process. So, on a lighter note and a positive, the board worked with Rite Aid over the last year to finalize plans for significant improvements to Rite Aid's facade, streetscape, and parking area. We should see those improvements over this year. In 2008, the Planning Board will begin the process of reviewing Highland Park's master plan. We're coming up on that review, and that's going to be very important to this community. Over the last four, four and a half years, the prior master plan has really been the guide to this community when it came to our 2020 plan and many other things that go on. This will include extensive public meetings to have that community conversation that the mayor has talked about recently, about the future of the community in regards to growth, open space, and recreation. I encourage everyone here to participate. Also, I want to thank the members of the Board of Adjustment for their dedicated service in 2007. Recently, it's seen many complicated and interesting issues come forward to them, and I think they're going to have some interesting conversations about the Cleveland Avenue proposal by Avalon Bay, and there's been some other things. And I want to thank Charles Liebling, I don't know if he's still here, but he was the leader of that board for many years and recently stepped down, and I want to thank him for his work. And I want to congratulate Judy Carter as the new chair of the Board of Adjustment. Now, I have one last thing that I've been working on over the last couple of years that hopefully will be coming to conclusion in '08, and that's the municipal recreation park project in town. The joint project between the borough of Highland Park, the Board of Education, and Middlesex County to build a new park behind the high school and middle schools continues to progress. We have finalized the design and construction plans and finished the bid document in order to complete the park in the first half of 2008. When it is finished, the borough will have both an active and passive recreation facility. This will include a new durable soccer and football field and a new playground with swings and ADA accessible play, ADA accessible play equipment. It will be the first large-sized park owned by the borough and allows to expand our recreational programs. Well, those are a few of the major projects that the economic development have toiled on over the 2007. I think, as I say, I think the crop is coming in this coming year and it's very exciting. And I'm excited about the progress that we are posed to make and the harvest of the coming year. I look forward to working with you all to make it a reality. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I just have to stretch after having been hunched over like that for such a long period of time. Okay, so I'm going to count on somebody down here in the front row. When the mayor starts giving you the high sign to shut me up, you'll let me know?
That's you, Bruce.
I didn't single anybody out. In 2008, I will continue as the chair of the council's finance committee, which means that I am the council person working most closely with our chief financial officer, treasurer, tax collector, tax assessor, and from a financial perspective, water and sewer utility. The borough budget is coordinated through the finance office, as is our annual audit. Additionally, I am the council liaison to the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, program. This year, I will be adding responsibilities as liaison to the library board, as well as the Highland Park Public Schools. Additionally, I will be the liaison to the Ethics Committee, and as well, I have responsibility for reviewing and identifying potential opportunities for shared services that can add value to our operations and ideally save us money. And, last but of course not least, I am liaison to our municipal court. To the professionals that are here this evening and those that are not, in each of these departments, as well as the volunteers on the various committees for which I am liaison, I'd like to say thank you for your hard work and dedication. I genuinely appreciate your contribution to the vibrancy of our borough and recognize the importance of your roles individually and collectively. Some of the remarks I'm about to make are a replay of excerpts from my most recent quarterly council report. I'll bet you didn't think a council person could have I'll bet you didn't think a councilperson could have greatest hits. But I've chosen to use this approach because I think it's, the information is sufficiently worthwhile that it bears repeating. In a corporation, my role would be thought of as the bean counter, and as the person trained to say no to virtually any expenditure. Now, I'm used to that role at home as the father. I get to say no to everything the family wants, right? Also, the so-called bean counters typically don't have much actual hands-on operating experience with an organization. However, as Finance Chair, I do try to take a critical look at how and where we expend resources, because that's my job. But I also feel fortunate that prior to becoming Finance Chair, I had five years on the council, working with virtually every other department in the borough to gain an understanding of their needs, issues, and challenges, to try to inform the budget and expenditure process. So, I'm constantly looking for opportunities to improve productivity, service accessibility, convenience, and operating performance, and I hope that all of you who have worked with me will acknowledge that I, that that in fact has been the nature of our working relationship. This can mean looking at the business case for an expenditure. Yes, there would be an out-of-pocket capital or operating expense, but do we save money or free up resources to do another important job if we make the investment? I ask those questions constantly, along with a ton of others, as I do this job. That means that budgeting and forecasting is something of a balancing act. Some services are vital, and funding resource, finding resources to fund them is an absolute priority. But then, in a small town like ours, so many services are a priority: public safety, education, services for youth and seniors, public works and infrastructure maintenance, recreation, health and welfare, and many others. One of which, one of which in particular, I'm going to single out for just a moment, not because it's more important, but because it's been the subject of some discussion recently, and that's a precious communal resource, our library. I want to say to Jane, and to the Library Board of Directors, and to the community at large, the governing body is completely supportive of the library and its mission, and we're committed to their desire to provide the best possible services to our residents. However, our definition of support may require everybody to be a little more creative and entrepreneurial this year than in the past, in the way we, in the way we go about seeking funding for some of the programs and services, which simply means that I look forward to partnering with the Library Board and embrace, and address the challenges, to embrace and address the challenges that we'll face together. So hopefully, you get a sense that there's a huge amount of time and effort necessary to plan, develop, and monitor the budget and our operations to meet our obligations, compliance requirements, and most importantly, affordably provide the services that we'd all like to see. Now, I've previously said in the borough, although I haven't done it with this pen necessarily, I will say this pen is not a magic wand. I wish that it were, and if it were, I'd waive it now, and I'd do all sorts of wondrous things to reduce taxes and improve services. However, since I lack such powers, please be assured that I, and my colleagues in the governing body, are as concerned about delivering high-quality services as affordably as possible, and are constantly balancing the challenge of affordability and service delivery, which are two often competing objectives. With that introduction, let me briefly turn to three subjects. The first is to outline some priorities we're exploring to enhance municipal services through the Finance Office in the coming year. I'd like to briefly review our prior year of operations, and three, I'd like to preview some key budget issues for 2008. As part of the periodic process of reviewing our banking relationship for cost and service quality, the Finance Department is researching opportunities to expand our services and their level of convenience. Some of these future enhancements may include: online payment, electronic funds transfer, telephone-based payments for taxes, utility bills, or other municipal obligations; payment of tax or other obligations by credit card. It's too soon to know, but yes, there may come a time in the near future when you will be able to earn those frequent flyer miles or other loyalty rewards by using your favorite credit card to pay your property taxes. A spoonful of sugar makes the medicine go down. Possible adjustments to the office hours to make our staff more accessible to residents, and we'll also look at potential enhancements to our website and voicemail systems to help address frequently asked questions more conveniently. Now, I'd like to briefly return to 2007. Our operating budget for the year was approximately $12.9 million. It's a huge sum for the relatively small number of property owners who fund the tax burden, but I'll address that more in just a moment. The 2007 municipal budget was virtually unchanged from 2006, showing an increase of one-quarter of 1% compared with an estimated increase in the Consumer Price Index of approximately 3.6%. I don't assume that costs have to automatically increase, but in the next few minutes, hopefully you'll understand that we have some substantial expenses that are beyond our control, so we try to be especially careful about balancing cost control and enforcing cost control when and where we can. It's important to remember that municipal expenditures only account for 25% of the tax dollars in the borough. The balance is to fund other vital services provided by the county, and of course, for the schools. The short-term reality is that in a small town like Highland Park, we find it especially challenging to absorb the huge external costs, such as 2007 unfunded state mandates of approximately a half million dollars for stormwater management compliance. It's a vital program to ensure that we do everything possible to reduce stormwater pollution, but it's very expensive for us to absorb locally. Another major expense over the past several years is an item which people don't realize has been, to a large extent, externally driven and inherited from a prior governor's administration. Some of you may recall that during the Whitman administrations, during the Whitman administration in New Jersey, state income taxes were reduced. This was accomplished largely through a pension holiday. That is, the pension obligations of the state were deferred and restructured to require larger payments at future dates to ensure that the state's obligations would eventually be covered. What most people don't realize is that those obligations were never state obligations. They were obligations of the municipality. The biggest example of this is the PFRS, or Police and Fire Retirement System. Now, before I go further, I want to pause for a moment. This money is earned and well-deserved. After all, what can we as taxpayers really do to show our public safety professionals just how much we appreciate what they do for us? And I think our public safety professionals hopefully know that we're unwavering in that commitment. So, we in fact, obviously are going to fund this obligation, but I need to point out purely from a fiscal perspective, that the timing of these deferrals engendered by the former governor has an enormous impact on our current local finances. For example, from the period of 2005 through '07, our PFRS obligation alone exceeded a half a million dollars, which is more than the annual cost of some borough departments. An half million dollars translates by itself to nearly $500 in municipal taxes on an average assessed home. I want to reemphasize, there is no question that our public safety employees have earned and will receive this money. I'm using this as an example purely to indicate the economics involved. So between these two unfunded mandates that I've referred to, the PFRS and stormwater management, an average home would have been assessed over $1,000 just because of those two unfunded mandates, and that's before adding any contractual, any other contractual obligations or services which we, where we may be experiencing rising costs. Now, consider that. The municipal tax rate that I mentioned before increased by substantially less than what otherwise would have been dictated. Now, I know that that's probably not much comfort, and I understand that. But I think it's important that the residents understand that this is an indication that we're doing everything possible to offset funding the cost of what is crucial, that is, to fund what we must fund, what we must have, while figuring out how to afford, if at all, what would be nice to have. And in that spirit, we submitted almost a $700,000 capital budget to the state for the year 2007, but elected to defer those investments until 2008 to give us further time to explore and consider alternatives about their potential fiscal impact and benefit. Okay, now I want to just briefly preview the 2008 budget, and I'd like to put this in perspective by quoting something from yesterday's New York Times, New Jersey, in the Region section, and for you visual learners in the audience, I have it right here. The pull quote from this article, "Crucial Year for Corzine," says, "Challenges facing the governor in 2008 include a $3 billion budget deficit." Now, I hope one day in life that my problems include, as opposed to are topped by, a $3 billion budget deficit. But that said, I think another quote from a former elected official is also useful. When he was campaigning for president against George Bush, Bill Clinton used to say, "The problem with trickle-down economics is the trickle-down just didn't trickle." I can assure you that a $3 billion state budget deficit in 2008 will unfortunately trickle down to Highland Park, and we are planning accordingly. At the outset, we're going to plan for another PFRS contribution. In 2008, this will be 600, approximately $600,000, bringing our three-year contribution to $1.1 million. And because of the way the state requires us to budget, we are not able to earmark annual reserves specifically to cover this cost. Yes, we do generate surplus revenues in some years, but we have guidelines about what we can prudently maintain in that account. If there's, if there is any, quote, "good news" in this, it's that we expect that this will be the last year of an increased obligation of this magnitude. And again, this is before considering any additional contractual obligations or commitments for the new year. My point is that we're always looking for cuts to ensure that we operate a lean organization, and we continue to seek grants as appropriate. We've undertaken a comprehensive review and updated as appropriate fee schedules to ensure that users of various optional services provided by the municipality cover their associated costs for rendering such services. But simply for explanatory purposes, funding our operations and providing services is significantly more challenging when you know you have to fund over a half million dollars in savings offsets even before the year begins. That said, we know what we need to do, and we've already begun the process of doing it. An additional point about our budget. The mayor has spoken previously about our disproportionate share of multifamily rental properties in Highland Park as it relates to our overall revenue base. Because these properties are assessed using a different formula than other property types, a number of these landlords had sought relief from tax increases via the appeal process. Although many of these appeals have been withdrawn, the mayor continues to lead a statewide initiative to review the assessment process for apartment complexes to ensure it's fair to the tax base as a whole. My point is that we are doing all we can from all facets of the budget process to make sure that we identify areas that could adversely impact our tax base and seek every possible avenue to address them. Another issue is that, is, another issue of debate that continues entrenching around the state is regarding the structural issue of how to best fund our schools. I am not here to discuss that issue in detail, but only to point out that the outcome of such discussions will also ultimately have an impact on our local tax rates. In my remarks regarding 2007, I mentioned that we deferred our capital budget requests until 2008, and in some instances, possibly longer. One small bright spot in this year's budget is that we have not increased our debt service expense for the current year, and the capital budget is an excellent example of the balance I mentioned at the beginning of my remarks. In 2008, we'll revisit this budget to ensure that we do keep pace with our need for equipment and infrastructure projects. As it relates to this year and subsequent years, I'm confident, confident that we will do all we can to try to strike an effective balance of expense control, fiscal prudence, and affordable delivery of municipal services. Where possible, we'll seek to add convenience and flexibility. However, as many of you have heard me say before, we can only do so much to save our way to fiscal health. It's essential that we practice fiscal prudence, but we also need to generate added revenue for us to continue funding and hopefully improving the quality of life we enjoy, and I'm going to assume that ideally over time, that added revenue will come primarily from additional ratables, and I look forward to adding, to updating you on our future progress. I'd like to close by thanking all of you for your continued, your continued support, and extend my best wishes to each and every one of you and your families for 2008.
And now, our council president.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Huananua. As, one of, one of my many duties on councils last year was being a chair to Community Service, Department of Community Service, the Council on Aging, Cable TV, and Recreation. And that's a very, very busy, that's the hot spot of the community, because as you know, everything that happens in our community happens in that department, so all those helpers over there are always kept very busy. First, I want to report on the Arts Commission, which I, which I am the liaison to. Last year, they had a book reading, we had a townwide book reading, and that was called "The Ditch Digger's Daughter." And the book was one book, one Highland Park, so all of Highland Park came together, and we had a wonderful book reading. We had various events around the book. We had family movies, we had talent shows, we had Workshop for Success, we had readings at the library, and at the end of it all, in, it started from March to April, and in April, the writer of the book, Dr. Thornton, she came to Highland Park, and she was just wonderful. There was a lot of questions, we had a great showing. Highland Park came out, they had a lot of questions, and I was amazed to see how many people actually read the book. The library could never keep a copy, and I think she sold about 50 copies that night when she was here, and she sang a beautiful song, "Wings Beneath My Wind." The story was wonderful. For those who missed the opportunity to read the book, it's a great book, you should read it. The Arts Commission also had their fifth annual Open Studios, and this year, they were proud to say that they had 46 residents that participated in that, and it was a wonderful event. They had something at, on Raritan Avenue, at I Am Pottery, and that allowed more people who didn't have a space to utilize a space for more artists away from the residential homes. And also, it gave people who were walking off the streets, and people, non-residents of Highland Park, and even residents of Highland Park, an opportunity to go and see wonderful works of art. They did a phenomenal job, and it was, it was just beautiful, everything that they did. The Arts Commission really put out last year, and they put on a great, great show. The next area is our cable advisory TV, and we have been very, very busy on the cable advisory TV. One of the things that we researched last year was a Wi-Fi system, a town-wide Wi-Fi system. And that idea was if we could provide cable access to, when we're in the, wireless access, where, whenever we're in the park or any public space, that would be great. And for those who do not have cable access at home, that, we were trying to make that available. We did a lot of things around it. We participated, we partnership with many different departments here in town, the school systems, local businesses, and what the like. We have one more meeting that we're going to have with the Wi-Fi people, and then we're going to decide if this is a project that is good, and it's a good fit for Highland Park, and that will be this coming Friday. But that, that's a great project, and if we could do something that would benefit everyone in town to have wireless access, that would be great. It would be one of the ways to get the kids outside of the house and from the computers, at least they'll be in the park with some fresh air in the summertime. Another thing that the cable TV did was they did lots of training for all our aspiring film makers. They were training teen, teen night programs, training was on Thursday nights, and we had, we had many takers that came out and actually wanted to learn how to use the equipment and how to be movie makers. As a matter of fact, the library is working on a filmmaking series, and they, and hopefully we'll actually see something on cable TV from all our movie makers that we have now fully trained in town, and hopefully they'll come out and volunteer to do some projects on their own and help out with different meetings that we have, that we would love to have them cover. Speaking on that note, on January 23rd at 8:00 PM, January 24th at 8:00 PM, we will be having cable, cable vision will come out, and we're going to have an open forum, so anyone who have questions that they would like, and I know there are many, that they would like to ask of cable vision, who is our service provider, this will be a great opportunity to come out and ask those questions. The meeting will be here, please come out, and if you missed the date, it's also running on cable TV, so you can get more information there, and if you have any questions, Gary is, Gary Leslie is always happy to answer those questions for you. Last year, we also had a revision of the human, our former Human Rights Commission. We did, we revised the Human Rights Commission, and we, it's now called the Highland Park Human Relations Commission. The, we restructured the commission with new logos, and one of the logos is "Stamp Out Racism," and we, and when we had the street, the street fair, we had people walking around with that, "Stamp Out Racism," and vendors in town, and businesses in town also had the logo in their windows, and I think it's a great way to show Highland Park, to show how diverse we are, and to show how much we're together in Highland Park. Coming this, coming the end of this month, the Human Relations Commission will also be doing the Highland Park Idol. And the Highland Park Idol is similar to the idol that they, the American idol that you see on TV, and we're hoping to get everyone in Highland Park up, out, and really enjoying. It's a great way for us to, to mix and mingle, to show that we're diverse, but we have so much that we can enjoy in common. It's a time for us to come out and to meet new friends and say hello to the old ones that we've met along the way. So, Highland Park Idol is coming soon, please watch your cable TV for more information, and I'm quite sure, once you see this on TV, then you're going to be excited and you want to get invited. you want to get involved. And it’ll be, our Highland Park local television station will be a place where everybody will want to turn to, to see what’s next. A part of the Highland Park Idol is that one of the grand prizes that we will be giving out will be a trip to Atlantic City for the persons to perform at the House of Blues in Atlantic City. So this promises to be really exciting, so we want you all to sign up, everyone, come out, participate, and have a great time with getting to know your friends and neighbors. The next thing that we worked on last year was our Veterans Day Parade, and the Veterans Day Parade was well-attended. It was at the Doughboy as usual. And this year, we had one special person that came out. We had Sergeant Vasallo, his son, that was stationed in Iraq. He was home from active duty, and he was our grand marshal for the parade, and we were really honored to have him. And the parade was fabulous, and it was a great day in Highland Park to for a parade. And as usual, I want to encourage all Highland Parkers to come out at all the parades, because that’s an important service that is done for us, and we really need to participate and show our support. The Department of Community Service, that’s one busy, 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 busy department. We kept the department busy with all kinds of programs, events, activities. And sometimes I wonder how they breathe over there because there’s always something going on. For instance, in March, they had a visit to the Emerald Isle, and that was a flower show in Philadelphia. They had the senior prom. And the king and queen of the prom this year was really exciting. Harvey Budner was the prom king, and Stella Doris was our queen. And they had such a wonderful time. I never attended my prom, so I had a chance to go to the prom, so it was great for me. And it brought back a lot of great memories for those who had attended their prom. And for me, it was my first one, so I was excited. They also visited the Newark Museum, where they saw different screens, phlegms, and this one particular play, I’ve Been Rich All My Life. And it’s these phenomenal women that danced at the Cotton Club, and they’re in their 80s and 90s, and they are still performing. It was a wonderful show. So I think they’re going to be there. I’m trying to get them to come to Highland Park to get our seniors out, up, and dancing, and to show that there’s a lot of life left after you have hit the golden years, that there’s a lot more that can be done. The Silver Bells, the dancers were phenomenal, and hopefully, we’ll get them to come out for one of our senior luncheons. Speaking of which, this year, we had our one senior that turned 100, and that was awesome. We had a lovely luncheon, she had a presidential citation, and she was just so happy. And she danced more than most of us that particular day, but she’s always dancing. She has a wonderful heart, very vibratious person. We also, for the seniors, we had an environmental awareness lecture in April, and we talked about the importance of keeping our community clean and vibrant. We talked about how the seniors also can help to keep the streets and fields and yards, and to talk about native plants and what have you, and how each and everyone can participate in keeping Highland Park green, keeping our community green. And that was followed up by some lecture series as well, and also some plantings at the senior facility next door. What’s new in recreation? There’s a lot of new things, a lot of new and exciting things that’s going on in our Recreation Department. Our Recreation Department now has a wonderful coordinator, and her name is Andrea Bay, and she has been phenomenal. She has created a lot of new programs and created a lot of new energies that a lot of the people are coming in and they want to be a part of. We have lots of volunteers that have joined, and we’re still looking for more volunteers. And we’re still looking for more people to come out and get involved. In addition to the youth activity, we offer adult sports and activity and community events. We have just successfully completed our Fall Youth Soccer Program. Over 140 children participated in the weekly games and bi-weekly rover clinics and team practices. We attended all the games, boys and girls, at Rutgers Soccer Games, participated in the fundraising event for Lonny’s Angel, and had a cleat exchange to help recycle outgrown equipment, not overgrown equipment, that’s what I was going to say, but outgrown equipment. So we’re recycling our outgrown cleats and what have you, and sports equipment. So if you have them, we’re still looking for them, and it’s a great fundraiser, and it’s a great cause. We also had our Halloween Carnival, and we had over 200 children in attendance. It was funny, it was scary, and we even had Sheila, our new Director of Community Service, she was out there, and she was a fairy, and everyone came out and participated. It was a lot of fun. And come out, enjoy the activities that’s going on over there. We also had Sergeant Alera, who came and talked about Halloween safety, which was very important. Our music man was Mr. Ray, and he kept the crowd entertained. But most important, Sergeant Alera came out and informed the kids of how they need to be safe, and the importance of being safe when they’re out and when they go about trick-or-treating and that kind of thing. So it was a well-put-together program, and everyone had a great time. Mommy and me, playground is open, and it’s open to moms, dads, grandparents, and guardians, and children of all ages. It’s a free program, it’s a free program, and it’s held on Wednesdays, Wednesday morning from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And parents and children are invited to drop by and join in the singing, the group play, the circle time, and the informal gathering. It’s a great program, as I said before, so you really should, if you have little ones at home and you need to have that downtime or that playtime, it’s a great to connect the kids together and to connect the mommies and me, and the daddies and me, and the grandparents all together. This year, we also worked on our teen night program, and our Friday Night Teen Program has been phenomenal. We have seen anywhere from 35 to 45 young people over at the Barter School Gym participating in basketball games, or just hanging out, talking, or what have you. The program has been great. One night, we had an activity over at the bowling alley where we took them bowling, and they had a great time with that. We also did something where they had a pizza party that was really good. The program is held at Barter School on Friday nights, and that’s from 7:00 until 10:00 p.m. Well, really 9:30, but we can’t get them out of the building once they get going. The program has ended in December, but it will start back up again in the spring, because everybody’s playing football and what have you. So the program will begin early spring, so the kids that want to play basketball can go over and do so. Department of Recreation will partner with Highland Park Varsity Football Coaches and Varsity Athletic to bring the second year of arena football, flag football, which will be from February 26th to March 27th. And that’s another program that we have seen a spike in and a lot of participation, and people are really excited to be a part of that. Our adult recreation program is in the midst of their 10th week session, and the calendars are available. If you’re interested in doing Pilates, yoga, step strength and beyond, Israeli dancing, volleyball, open basketball, gym for men and women, indoor soccer, and a host of other activities, please see Community Service, they have all these great programs. I know there is a need for during the week events for adults, and that’s one of the things that we’ve been hearing, that they want more activities for adults, so there are things that are available for adults during the week. We’re continuing to explore more program, and we will continue to do so. Please let us know if there’s anything that you want to help us with, or we can help with, because we really do need your help. It has to be a partnership to make it all work. Some of the things that we worked on this past year was New Jersey Museum of Agriculture. The kids had a program called The Little Red Hen, and it was a storytelling activity. And it was really structured, the kids, it was structured, and it was an interactive program. And they participated, learning how to grow wheat, how to harvest, and how to work on a farm, which goes right with our green community that we are here in Highland Park. Black page. And then, we also, our Outreach Department, our Senior Outreach Department is really growing. Since we started the program a year ago, we have seen a lot of improvement, a lot of increase with more seniors participating in our outreach programs that we offer. And there is a list of medications and discount medication and information that can be had. For instance, there is information that’s available on Medicare, there’s an 800 number for Medicare. There is a County Department of Aging, which is called SHIP, and there are counselors available for seniors who really need that program. And we do have a large amount of seniors here in town, so this is very good information. And you can always go to Community Service or give a phone call over there and find out all the health information that you need. And I’m quite sure, based on the list that I’ve seen, it’s quite extensive. They have information on PADS, which is pharmaceutical assistance for the aging disabled. They have a whole host of different programming that will be of great use for seniors or people who have aging family members. Last but not least, and I’m really getting there. Merrill is not giving me the, yet, right? Coming this spring, last but not least, Mark touched on it a little bit, but coming this spring, we are going to be seeing some road improvements on Woodbridge Avenue. It’s been a long time, and I’m happy to say that we’ll be seeing curb cuts, we’ll be seeing sidewalks, we’ll be seeing ADA accessible cutouts on the avenue, and new street furniture. And it will lead from 7th all the way up to almost by Crows Road. And that should be done this spring. And I’m keeping my fingers crossed, I really am, because this has been a project that has been going on for a long time, and that is the traffic light on Woodbridge Avenue. We’ve been awaiting that light forever. And if this happens, when we get the cutouts, the new roads, the new sidewalk, we get our traffic light, anybody who’s ever got stuck waiting to get onto Woodbridge Avenue knows exactly what I’m talking about. You live in Highland Park, you have been there for like forever, waiting to get across. So coming this spring, I’m hopefully that the light will be in place, and that would be great. And this always made possible from a grant from our freeholders, and I really, Mayor, Council, myself, really thank and appreciate all their efforts in fast-tracking this, so we can get this program going. And I was really happy with making copies today, which I shouldn’t be, because this is a green community, but I have a lot of duplicate copies. Last but not least, the Department of Aging, and Department of Community Service, particularly Lisa Blum and I, with Department of Aging, have been working on one exciting thing, and that is the sister-city relationship between a trip to Jamaica and going down for a few days and doing something environmentally, and sharing some of our, what we know, sharing it there, and also having a great, great time. So if you’re excited, you want to go have a little bit of fun, this is something that the Department of Community Service is doing. So sign up, Lisa, see Lisa Blum, she’ll be happy to help you out with that. And I want to thank you so much for listening to me going on and on. And I would also like to thank all the volunteers, all the staff, especially at Community Service, that I hound, we hound, and they’re always there to answer the call, for providing such wonderful service to not only us when we call, but to all our residents. Thank you so much, and I hope you all will have a happy and prosperous new year.
Elsie, I’m in for Jamaica.
I feel so liberated. I never have to listen to John tell me that I give the longest reports again.
Well, wait a second, we still don’t have Fern’s report, but I’m going to...
Fern’s here, Fern’s report is here.
I know it’s here, but I’m going to break with tradition. And Patrick, I was going to ask you to present it. But how would you all feel if I give you the nutshell version?
Nutshell.
Nutshell, and you can all read it in the newsletter. Fern was overseeing our Public Works and Environment Committee. The Public Works and Environment Committee is very active. Don Rich is here, he’s done a fantastic job reorganizing it and making it much more efficient. That is also, her committee is also where our green community is. The green community, just a few weeks ago, put out our plan, our green plan, that is sort of a Phase Two. As you know, Highland Park is New Jersey’s first green community. The Phase Two is where we talk about, well, let’s really prove we make a difference. Communities all over the state and all over the country now have signed the mayor’s climate agreement, but what in Highland Park we wanted to do is say, well, are we really making a difference? And so, this plan was presented to council a few weeks ago, and John will be taking over Public Works and the Environment, and they’ll be looking at the plan and how we can implement it. She also oversaw the construction of the Environmental Center, which we are still, it is complete, but we are still waiting to get it up and running, and John will be taking over that as well. A Meadows Project, that’s Trails Down to the River. Our Shade Tree Commission, we plant 100 trees a year. And you know what, I’ll let you all read the rest in the newsletter, how’s that?
This isn’t going to work. I’m sorry to put it back.
How’s that? And I have a treat for you all, because as you know, my mayor’s report, the annual State of the Borough, is usually about 45 minutes. But I thought this year, with the council going and with such extensive reports, you know, as you can see, let’s just stop first and give them all a hand, because they do an extraordinary job. Every single one of them takes this job very seriously, and I’m not sure, we have some professionals here that are in lots of other towns, I’m not sure you find other towns where their council takes this job so seriously and really does such a fine job, and I’m so proud to work with all of you. But I thought, they’re telling you the details, I don’t need you to sit here for 45 minutes. What I’d like to do is just give you an overview of where we are, and what we care about, and where we’re going. Unless you’d rather have the longer version. Okay, great. It’s an honor to be here tonight to be sworn in as your mayor. This is the first time that a mayor has been elected for a third term in our community. And I believe that’s because our residents have very high standards. They’re demanding, but fair. They want to see that their elected officials are in touch with the community, that they’re attentive, and that they deliver on their promises. And I am here tonight, a third-time mayor, the first time because we’ve delivered on our promises, because we’ve remained involved in the life of our community day to day, and because together, with a lot of wonderful people, we’ve been able to create a vision for this community that is unique and which reflects the traditional small-town values, but also looks toward the future. I stand here today because people know that the clean, open government that we created was a real thing, that the changes we brought were substantial, and they were lasting, and they’re something that we can be proud of. But there’s still more to come. But first, I’d like to take a few moments to reflect with you about the change that voters demanded eight years ago, when I first became mayor, and also to think with you about the future. Eight years have passed, and sometimes we forget how we had to fight for those changes. Changes in the way the borough operated, changes in the way we delivered our services, changes in the way we did business, and a change in the way that the council would represent the incredible diversity in this town. We sometimes forget how we had to push past entrenched interests to make things different in Highland Park. And although the old guard made a try for it again last June, this community said loud and clear, “We want good government, clean government, we want decency, civility, and we want to look forward, not back.” And we won this historic third term with a mandate again to keep going, to make progress, and to move forward, and we will never go back. We are now a leader in the state for ethics in government, with the editors of the Star Ledger and New Jersey Citizen Action calling the Highland Park model one for communities statewide to emulate. We are a leader statewide and nationally for our green community and our environmental sustainability, winning award after award for progressive programs and our leadership in the field, long before it was a hot issue. And we are a model for our approach to redevelopment and rebuilding a once-stagnant downtown, with our tremendous Main Street organization. in the field, long before it was a hot issue. And we are a model for our approach to redevelopment and rebuilding a once-stagnant downtown with our tremendous Main Street organization and redevelopment agency. We are also a model statewide for our innovative approaches, our commitment to economic sustainability, smart growth, and also for community building and citizen participation in government. These things we stand for now, the green community, smart development, ethics in government, open government, they are all part of the promise that we made eight years ago, and we've kept. Our vision for this town was that we would be a beautiful, productive, affordable, economically and environmentally sustainable town, and we are well on our way, bringing in over $8 million in outside aid to make that happen. Our promises have been kept, with a beautiful streetscape plan, starting with the Centennial Park, new streetlights this spring, traffic signals this summer, and then sidewalks and furniture and more. We are well on our way with a contract for a new theater, retail and space and residences, with wonderful stores, a new vibrancy, with excitement and with the spirit in this community. You see, what is different about Highland Park is that we don't just talk about change, we make it happen. And that requires vision, a vision that we created cooperatively with the help of the community, and that requires leadership. Leadership is all about implementing a vision. Leadership is about working with people, good people, talented people, bright, effective, amazing people in this town to implement this vision. And we are so lucky to have this treasure, those people who are working for the borough and volunteering to make this all happen. It's a beautiful thing to watch. A community creates a vision, and then the community implements it, and it's a very unusual thing in Highland Park. But it's not always easy, and there is no doubt that we live in a spirited town where people are not shy from expressing their opinions, where there is a vigorous debate, and we are lucky that people care deeply about their community, their homes, the quality of their lives, their neighborhoods, the services, and their vision for the future. We in Highland Park value that discourse and that debate. It makes us better, sharper, and more in sync with our community, and I am honored to be part of it. And I realized from the start, eight years ago, that very difficult start, that one of the most important responsibilities that I have is to set the tone and to maintain a tone of respect and fair-mindedness and focus on the issues, not personality, all of the time. And with only a few exceptions, we, this diverse community filled with active and wonderfully opinionated people, have been able to work toward a common vision. We work together to make things happen. And as we look at our town, we see many wonderful things that we've done together. We've created plans for our future, we've created an environmental center, we've brought in new businesses, we've done our best to minimize tax increases despite economic pressures that are always forcing us to make do with less. And yet, there's so much more to do. As a council, we have pledged to focus on making sure that our projects are completed, that we are able to find outside funding and push through a very frustrating labyrinth of state regulation. And with our programs up and running, we are turning our focus on the tax situation. Highland Park is taking a leadership role in Trenton in the fight for fair property taxes. Like towns all throughout the state, Highland Park taxpayers are suffering with staggering property taxes. Over the past eight years, we at the borough have worked to find savings, consolidating departments, eliminating positions, and sharing services, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars. We brought in millions in outside grants to fund our projects. Our development projects will also bring in new ratables, but still, the property tax situation worsens. Because increased state mandates, pension costs, and because of the unfair slant of the local property tax assessment system, which favors large landlords over homeowners in the community like Highland Park, where we're over 64% rentals, this slant will strangle us. Highland Park is taking the lead in changing the law to provide for fair assessments of all residential properties. If this is passed, then we will save tens, if not hundreds, of thousands of dollars in taxes for our homeowners. We're not looking to shift the burden, we are looking for fairness in the system. And we will fight the way that we fought with Verizon over the cell tower and won, the way we are fighting to clean up our contaminated sites and winning, the way we are fighting to keep a supermarket in town, and we will win. We will take a lead in the fight for fair property tax assessments in Trenton, and we will win. Eight years ago, we promised change, and we delivered. There is no doubt, but there is still more to be done, and it won't be easy, given the financial obstacles that are gripping the entire state. But still, we promise to continue working together to refine the vision of Highland Park. We promise to continue to improve services to our seniors and our kids and our teens and for our adults. We promise to continue working together with our public safety professionals and our volunteers to assure that they can do their jobs. We promise to continue to find ways to keep our jewel, the Highland Park Public Library, open and accessible. And we promise to continue to promote our green community. We promise to continue to bring you safer streets and a thriving downtown. And we promise to continue to keep open-minded, accessible, public participation in our decision-making. All this with fewer resources, we will have to be smarter and even more lean and more creative. And with all this that we've experienced over the last eight years and into the future, we promise to keep our most cherished commodity, our unique character, our beautiful, small-town living that is Highland Park. And as you know, we will deliver. Thank you all, and here's to 2008. And now for our business.
Wait, don't we have to make a motion first to spread the mayor's message on the minutes?
Sure. You want to switch? There you go. I think I have a mayor in the making. What do you think, Eric? Please.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay. May I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. On our consent agenda items, do I have a motion to adopt the following, 15, 16, 17 through 33?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay, do I hereby appoint? I hereby establish the mayor's wellness campaign committee, and I hereby appoint the following to serve as professionals for 2008. Borough Attorney Edwin Schmier, Special Counsel Daniel McCarthy, Tax Appeal Attorney Martin Allen, Labor Attorney Arthur Tibolt, Borough Auditor Andrew Hodgillick, Borough Prosecutor Pat Bradshaw, Borough Engineer Dave Samuel, and Temporary Borough Planner Bruce Rydel. Do I have a motion to confirm?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Ed, would you like to join us up here? Come on up. I hereby appoint the Borough Historian William Duca and Jean Colva, the Deputy Borough Clerk Janet Molina, the ADA Coordinator Karen Waldron, and the Library Board of Trustees Council Rep Gary Minkoff. Do I have a motion to confirm? Motion to confirm?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
How about if we do the oath of office at the end? Okay. I hereby appoint the Borough, the Planning Board Borough Official Members Scott Luthman, the Planning Borough Mayor's Designate Steve Busby, and the Library Board of Trustees Mayor's Alternate Mark Mappin. I hereby appoint to the Board of Health Laurel Kornfeld and Mona Peric, the Library Board of Trustees Julie Green, Lisa Goldberg, and Susan Roth, to the Cable TV Advisory Committee, Carl Wilson as the library rep, the CDBG Advisory Committee Gary Minkoff, Irene Dwarick, Deborah Morgan, Edward Prince, and Karen Waldron, the Emergency Management Council John Spinoza, Thomas Hamel, Jody Carter, Karen Waldron, Donald Rich, Scott Luthman, to the Community Food Pantry David Hyman, Jody Carter, Susan Powell, Joan Gartenberg, Joy Gianolio, Lila Saltiel, Laurel Kornfeld, Lynn Platt, Beth Leach, David Day, and Karen Waldron, to the Recreation Advisory Committee Eric Weinberg, Steve Gable, Lynn Sherman, Marty Friedman, Mike Ambrosio, Ralph Bay, David Reichman, and Michael McCarty, Shade Tree Advisory Committee Carol Avilsgard, Arnold Henderson, Aileen Coffey, Roseanne Kala, Ruth Bowers, Karen Swain, Barbara Lewis, Belinda Beatham, Elizabeth Rosner, and Harvey Clay, the Employee Safety Council Scott Luthman, Frank Atherton, I guess that's for a while, Don Rich, Robert Cahill, Anne Stevens, Renee George, Dave Merrill, Hector Malave, Derek Wazkowski, and Sheila Flamm, the Municipal Alliance Theodore Troplick, Harvey Brudner, Dennis Lee, Lisa Blum, Sheila Flamm, Alima Zimmer, Nate Siegel, Joseph Olara. Do I have a motion to confirm?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
I hereby appoint the following to the Community Response Team Myrna Frank, Rabbi Elliot Malamet, Rob Hotzoffel, Fire Chief Hector Malave, Jody Carter, Barry Chris, and Chief Frank Atherton. I hereby appoint to the mayor's wellness campaign Dr. Cliff Lacy, Phil Cohn, Azriella Jaffee, Colleen McKay-Wartan, Jane Lewis, Sarah Kahn, Barbara Chapner, Mitch Rosen, Robin Schumer, Sheila Highsmith, and Ellen Levine. I have no confirmation to...
Not for that, no.
Okay, should I do the oath of office?
Sure.
Okay, everyone that needs to be sworn in, come on up. Do you need the oath again?
Yeah.
That's it? Scott, get up. I know that now.
Everybody come up.
I just changed it on mine. Didn't tell me that stuff till this morning. It's up in the air. This is great. Okay, now you're just going to fill in the blanks, okay? Okay. I... Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear. This was a big one.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of Office of...
Deputy.
Deputy.
Attorney.
Attorney.
Borough Engineer.
ADA Coordinator, Ned Al.
Safety Committee and Community Response Team.
Other duties as assigned.
Planning Board.
Great. I do further solemnly swear or affirm...
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people.
Congratulations.
You made it.
Thank you very much. Okay. May I have a resolution to appoint the council rep to the planning board? Why is this... Yes?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. The council rep is... Mark. Do I... I guess I don't want him to...
I didn't get to say the name.
I think you're hurting his feelings.
The suspense is killing me. You can always change it.
You want it, John?
Okay. Do I have a motion for the council rep to the planning board?
So moved. Second.
Who's that? That is Mark. Oh. Mark, I'm really sorry.
That's all right. It's Watkins, by the way.
There is a motion, is there a...
A motion, a motion.
You got it. Okay, can we do all these roll calls at the end? Or do we have to do them each at a time? Councilor, for attorney?
You can do it all at one time.
Cool. Great, thank you.
We like this guy.
I like those executive decisions. That's great. Okay.
And he's billing by the hour, too.
There you go.
Gary, you just made him a mint.
Excuse me.
No, I didn't.
May I have a motion on designating the council rep to the County CDBG Committee? And that is Gary Minkoff. Motion?
Second.
Okay. Can I have a resolution to appoint our tax collector Kathy Kovak?
Motion?
Second.
Okay. See, they acted on you quickly, Kath.
Okay.
Can I have a resolution to appoint the recreation consultant Andrea Bay? Motion?
Second.
Okay. Do I have a resolution to adopt the 2008 municipal and water sewer temporary budgets?
Motion?
Second.
Now, may I have a roll call on these?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Minkoff?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Okay, public discussion? You want to talk, anybody?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Ruth. Of course you can.
You don't have to stand on the box if you don't want to.
No, I'll stand this way.
She wants to stand on the box.
That's probably a good idea. But talk into the microphones that we can hear you, and please state your name and address.
Ruth Bigheart, 307 Magnolia. I would like to publicly thank the fire department who came to my rescue last week. I lost track of the night, but my smoke detectors went off, and I have hardwired smoke detectors. Nothing was cooking, nothing was burning, but couldn't find out what happened, and my tenant upstairs was as mortified as I was concerned. And they finally, from basement all the way up, they checked, and there were 12 smoke detectors. They found one that shorted out. So they disengaged it, so I am very grateful to the fire department.
Thank you.
Yeah, from issues that I read from the minutes, one of the things is from the Public Works Department, when people put things out for recycling, electronic equipment, which we all know doesn't go there, but it just seems to stay there. How do we get rid of that from the curbs?
Don, it's a good question. I've noticed that also.
Good. So that's whoever's in charge of...
They often get a sticker on them. Somebody mentioned the sticker.
They get a sticker on them, but they lie, and there's been a printer on one of the side streets.
I believe that the residents, they're supposed to bring it, but when they don't, it remains there. What do we do about that? Can she call the Public Works Department and they can get in touch with the... How do we deal with that?
We need to have a name and address to dispose of it.
There are a few places throughout town where they stay there for a while. Maybe we give them another sticker if they don't take it away? Or we find them further, or repeat offender or something?
I have a better solution. Why don't you give a pad and a pen to the garbage trucks as they drive through, because they're the ones who put the sticker on. Write down the address and turn that over to the appropriate authority, and you send them, that'll enhance your budget, Mr. Minkoff.
You're assuming, Mrs. Bigheart, that in all cases, the people who dispose of the equipment are the people whose address is responsible for that equipment. People don't always dispose where they live. always dispose where they live.
This lady back there once was sent a... I got a fine for my tenants, when I was an absentee landlord, I only lived across the river, because my tenants put the garbage can out on Sunday afternoon, and that was too early, an inappropriate time. And, I mean, it was like 20 years ago or so. The fine was $35. So I didn't have anything to do with it. I didn't even know about it until I got the ticket in the mail.
Well, Mrs. Bickert, maybe, John, you can take care of that in your committee? It's a good idea. I've seen it also.
I saw also in this packet that textiles are recycled. I was told that they don't take them. There's no market for it. So...
I wish Fern were here to answer those questions. John, can you?
Maybe you want to just...
What you can do is you can drop them off at the boxes at the Stop &amp; Shop.
That's what I do. But it's not part of the recycling thing, so that's sort of a little bit misleading.
The borough does get credit for those, so in terms of weight, we do get some credit in terms of the state.
Oh, good. Good to know. You just made some reference to the supermarket. We're all very concerned. What's happening there? Can you...
What's happening with the supermarket is they are now negotiating with both Stop &amp; Shop and another, and we are waiting to hear the conclusion of that, but it looks very good that we will be keeping a supermarket in town, and we've been very actively working with them.
Yeah, we can not have that.
You will never know how much work went into that supermarket.
Yeah, and in this small town, you need one supermarket. Even I patronize it because...
And as soon as there's a contract struck, we will make sure that everyone in town knows about that.
You mentioned some reference to street lighting. Is that just going to go up on Raritan or Woodbridge Avenue, or is it also going to come down some of the side streets?
This is the grant that we got from the Department of Transportation, and it's for pedestrian safety, and it is for Raritan Avenue.
Point of information, and I'm going to impose on the current chief, if I may. If I speak out of turn, you'll correct me. The chief, at council's request, earlier in the year, instructed a number of officers, I believe, to do a fairly comprehensive lighting survey. However, as I think was explained when we talked about it initially, there's a specific time of year when you can do a lighting survey, because trees, shield lights, et cetera. So I believe that they went neighborhood by neighborhood, and I don't know which neighborhood specifically got covered, but I think the intention was eventually to make sure that all the neighborhoods were looked at, to make sure that the appropriate fixtures and illumination were in place. So if they didn't get to your neighborhood yet, I think that they will be doing that survey, hopefully in the near future, and figure out if there are any lighting improvements that are indicated. And then we'll have to figure out how we pay for them.
No, my street is well-lit. I don't know who planned it that way, but I've got a light right in front of my house.
Not everybody has that big fortune.
And when the light burned out, I called public service myself. I didn't bother anybody else. They came and put the new bulbs in. But if you go down the avenues, second, rather the fourth and third, the sidewalks are not in good condition, and there's no, you know, at the intersections, there may be a street light, but nothing in between. And they're not using these halogen lights, you know, that sort of radiate. So there are a lot of really dark spots.
Thank you.
I think I mentioned it once before about equipment, children's equipment and so on, that people put out for the garbage. I think that's a scandal. And there are so many needy children. This past month, I brought in three car seats, one infant one and two for junior-sized kids, cleaned them up. I called the organization in New Brunswick. They came to pick them up. They wanted to give me a tax deduction. I said, "Don't even bother. They're not mine. When am I getting a tax deduction for?" Three days later, the lady called me up. She said, "They're all three gone," which means that there are... And one of them came back into Highland Park. She wanted me to know. That was the purpose of her call primarily. So I think that perhaps maybe a little bit of advertisement or on your newsletter that you're putting out...
That's a good idea. It's recycling, too. It could be part of the green community.
Yeah.
Mayor, is it? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And they can call me. You can put my phone number in there. I'll get...
Ruth, I'll be happy to take your information, so you can give me that information, so we can do something in community, so we can do a little flyer and have that available so people will know. And we can have something in probably in the next newsletter, just saying that we offer, you know, where they can go to
I'll drop it off for you.
Use of our recycles.
Well, I also think...
I'll drop it off for you on Thursday.
I also think Councilman Fern, I'll call her. She actually organized a...
Councilman Fern.
Councilwoman Fern.
How quickly they forget.
Yeah, whatever lesson.
What was her name?
I forget.
That's respect, isn't it? Which is great.
Good luck in...
Boy, don't ever leave the council.
Chicago, right? She went to Chicago. She...
She's watching, by the way.
Sorry, Fern. If I remember, she had announced at a prior meeting that there's an effort to organize a sort of community swap. I don't remember the name of it, but where where people, instead of just putting it out to recycling and throwing it in the garbage, will actually have a day almost like the community garage sale, yard sale, where people just give things away free. So I don't have the exact information, but we should make sure that that's publicized.
We'll ask John to pick that up.
John?
John?
Got it. All right.
Well, right now, I have a little tricycle sitting in my basement. All it needs is a coat of paint, and when the weather turns a little nicer outside, it'll get that. So anybody who wants one, they can get in touch with me.
Thank you.
And last but not least, and a serious concern particularly for seniors that don't drive anymore, is transportation after 3:00 and on weekends, because I'm told that even the reduced fares that the borough taxis charge within the borough don't hold for weekends and don't hold for evening hours. And that's something that the department are aging.
Elsie will find out about that. Then get back to you.
I've talked to them about it before, and nothing seemed to happen. That's why I'd like to join them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else for public comment? You sure? You want to go home?
Motion to adjourn?
Excuse me?
Motion to adjourn. What was that, mayor? I didn't hear. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have to wait for a minute?
Yeah, we have to wait for the mayor.
I'm sorry. Mayor, could you ask for a motion to adjourn?
Gary, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor Minkoff?
I changed my mind. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.